We call the Union to Worship and Conquest County Council Legislative Section 2025-08 for April 15, 2025. Those that like to stand if you want us in large prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have tresed us against us and led us not to temptation, but to deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom come, and thy power will be with us forever. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of its own will.
Wonderful. I obtain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. Second, any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda is passed unanimously. The first item we have on the agenda is a proclamation to recognize National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I believe we have Ms. Jamie Manning is here, and Ms. Jamie Dykes, I believe, possibly, and Pam Thompson, and Jen Dale? Everybody, good to have you all here.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Madam State's Attorney.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Who's fine? Oh, okay.
You're welcome, too.
Okay. And Ms. Chris Bozek is also here.
Good morning, everybody. It's my honor to read this proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas it is estimated nationally that more than 1,540 children die each year from child abuse and neglect, and whereas child abuse is a serious public health problem, with studies documenting the link between abuse and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility that requires partnerships among various agencies that work with children. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council proclaims April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, done this 15th day of April 2025, and signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak? If you look at them all pointing at each other.
As you all know, I'm sure, our CAC does incredible work, the investigators assigned, not only CPS but law enforcement, and our treatment providers for children. We've been at this for 25 years as a partnership, and we appreciate the recognition on their behalf and all of their good work, and thank you for recognizing it, council.
It's all yours, it's all yours.
What's happening?
Anybody want? Okay, picture.
A little closer, like we like each other, like we like each other. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Sir. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We have Ms. Summer Miles representing Life Crisis. Councilman James Wynn will be reading the proclamation.
So, excuse me, I have allergies this week, but this is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it, and whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems in the United States, nearly one in five women and one in 67 men have been raped at some point in their lives, and one in four girls and one in 20 boys have been sexually abused by the age of 17, and whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse can happen anywhere, including online cyberbullying, and sexual harassment have come to be expected as typical online behavior, and whereas we can make a difference by building safe online spaces that are free from sexual harassment, abuse, and assault by promoting online communities that value safety and respect. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims this month of April 2025 as Sexual Awareness Month in Wycomico County. Thank you. You have anything you want to say?
Yes, please. You guys took some of the statistics I was going to share, but we know that those statistics are wildly lower than probably what is truly out there in our communities. For one reason or another, lack of reporting is a huge, huge problem. A lot of that is surrounding the stigma of sexual assault and sexual violence, so to get this proclamation really shows that we are working to change that stigma and acknowledge that it exists in our communities and work to find a way to prevent it. So, thank you guys so much for recognizing this.
Ms. Jerona Smith, I believe, is here from Life Crisis. Councilwoman Shields will be reading the proclamation.
First, I want to say volunteerism is very important in our community. I always tell young people that they can't find a job, volunteer because you can use that as unpaid work. That helped me get a job when I moved back home. I volunteered at Shore Up, I volunteered at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, so I taught my kids how to volunteer. They used to hate it, but they knew they had to do it. So, I read this proclamation, proclamation Volunteer Appreciation Month, whereas April has been designated nationally as Volunteer Appreciation Month to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers, and whereas Volunteer Appreciation Month celebrates the impact volunteers have on our lives and encourages active volunteerism in generations to come, and whereas often unpaid, volunteers generously donate a part of their lives to connect with community members through local service organizations, and whereas Life Crisis Center Incorporated has volunteers who serve by donating their time for the CASA program and as domestic violence legal advocates. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council recognizes the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Wycomico County and urge all citizens to volunteer in the community. Can I say something?
Oh, yes, say something. She wants to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
And I would like to add that volunteerism across the state of Maryland is very low right now, and volunteerism across nationally is very low. So, what makes volunteering so important? What makes volunteerism so important? It's important because we cannot do this work alone. We need the support of our community members. In order to help change the trajectory for some of these children that we serve, it's going to take an entire community of people who are willing, we may not have the time, but a willing heart is just enough to help make all the difference in the life of some of these children.
Next, we have a special proclamation to recognize the 2025 finalist for Wycomico Teacher of the Year. Jeff Merritt is going to be reading the proclamation. Excuse me, am I getting, I'm getting, I'm sorry. First, we have to do the recognition of the 2025 Rising Star Award winner, and this is going to have Bill McCain is going to be here with us because Bill and his wife Teresa, they actually began this recognition award, and they actually do fund this recognition award, so we appreciate you being here. Mr. McCain, a former member of the county council, former vice president of Wycomico County Council. Appreciate you being here.
All right, so, we have the 2025 proclamation for Wycomico County Rising Star, Kelly Hendra. That's good. Whereas new teachers who successfully completed their first year in Wycomico schools are now, are now in their second year, are eligible for the Rising Star Award, which was established to recognize and support teachers who are excelling in their first years in profession, and whereas Ms. Kelly Hendra, a teacher at Prince Street Elementary School, was selected as finalist for the Rising Star Award, and whereas after a careful selection process, Ms. Kelly Hendra was, was named the 2025 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner for showing creativity in the classroom and for providing transformative experiences to her students. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Kelly Hendra for being named the 2025 Wycomico County Rising Star Award winner, done this 15th day of April 2025.
And just to share a few other comments, when my wife and I started this award about six years ago, it was to help encourage, you know, particular new teachers in our county to, you know, stay with the profession and, and recognize them for the hard work and the dedication that they have to the profession, and as my wife Teresa said at the Teacher of the Year banquet Thursday night, at the end of the day, there's no substitute for the classroom teacher. And so, you know, that was the purpose of this award. And to just elaborate a little bit on, on Kelly here, Kelly's a second grade teacher and Prince Street Elementary is very fortunate to have her and to have such a compassionate teacher as Kelly. Her classroom philosophy of think, believe, achieve demonstrates the passion that she brings to her students each day. She approaches her teaching with creativity, such as her classroom being transformed into a jungle to teach habitat. She tunes her students into interests such as using baseball concepts, which I like that a lot, to teach math, and she also started a drama club to help her students express themselves creatively. Her video clearly expressed the passion that she feels for her students, and we're proud to have her as this year's Rising Star Award. So, congratulations again.
Thank you. I'm very honored. This is, this has been an amazing award. Thank you. I'll continue to do my best.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the 2025 finalist for Wycomico Teacher of the Year, and Jeff, Vice President Merritt will be presenting the proclamation.
So, good morning again. I have three. So, Jessica, Stephanie, and Kelly, welcome. Thank you. We have so many amazing educators in our county, and these are three finalists out of, I don't know how many, what the number is of, of teachers, but these are three amazing individuals right behind me. I think it's important that we read each one of these because they're a little bit individual, rather than boilerplate these. So, I'll start with Jessica. Jessica Haynes is a finalist for the 2025 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year, whereas Ms. Jessica Haynes is an ESOL teacher at North Salisbury Elementary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent North Salisbury Elementary School as a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist, and whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Haynes scored in the top four amongst her peers and, and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, and whereas Ms. Haynes joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Jessica Haynes for being named a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done this 15th day of April 2025, signed by all members of the county council. I'll move on to Stephanie. Stephanie Mills is a 2025-2026 finalist for Wycomico County Teacher of the Year, whereas Ms. Stephanie Mills is a fourth grade teacher at Prince Street Elementary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Prince Street Elementary School as a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist, and whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Mills scored in the top four amongst her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, and whereas Ms. Mills joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Stephanie Mills for being named a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done this 15th day of April 2025, also signed by all members of the county council. And we'll move on to Kelly Harvey, whereas Ms. Kelly Harvey, a music teacher at Fruitland Primary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Fruitland Primary School as a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist, and whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Harvey scored in the top four amongst her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, and whereas Ms. Harvey joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Ms. Kelly Harvey for being named a 2025-2026 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist, done this 15th day of April 2025, signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council. And now you get to talk.
And I am the E-cell teacher at North Salisbury School, and I am absolutely honored and humbled by this award, and I just really have enjoyed the process, but it's also made me look deeper and being able to identify that we need to create a safe space for our students here in the county, a secure space, a place where they feel accepted, a place where they feel like they can be focused in their growth, but also a place where they can feel empowered to be who they want to be each and every day. So, that's, that's why I'm here, and I'm so thankful to be here today. Thank you all.
I'm Stephanie Mills. I, my reason why will always be the children that I service. This has been an amazing experience, and it, like Jessica had shared, it does make you reflect kind of on your practice, and like Ms. Hendra does with our room transformations is a big thing at our school, and just really bringing the experiences to our scholars. So, this has been a phenomenal experience. They have been super proud, but again, just my reason why remains the children, and I will continue to do the best for the scholars that we serve in this county.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for this recognition today. My name is Kelly Harvey, and I'm the music teacher at Fruitland Primary School, and I am proud to represent such an amazing education system that's going on at Fruitland Primary, but I didn't get here by myself. I got here through my colleagues and my friends and my family, and I can't thank them enough for them, for their support, but the people who truly got me here were my students from pre-K to college, and they fill me with joy and love and laughter, but they also challenged me every day to be a better teacher for them and for all the students that I'm going to teach as I continue on my educational career. So, thank you so much for this recognition.
Real quick, how many years as an educator?
Year eight.
Eleven.
Twenty-five.
And now we have the proclamation to recognize the 2025-2026 Wycomico Teacher of the Year. Councilman Josh Hastings will be presenting the proclamation.
So, I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing Emma Cohn Matthews as the Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. I want to say, of course, Emma, on behalf of the government of Wycomico County, I just want to say we are so very proud of you. This is an incredible achievement, going to have for the rest of your life, and be attached to who you are. It's pretty amazing. So, every year, I like to, before, when I find out who the Teacher of the Year is, I like to go and do some snooping online and find out, and then ask people around, what are their comments about that person? So, I'll start with, actually, I'm starting with what my twin sister says. She says, she is so very kind, known for being so welcoming, so warm, a warm smile, a great coworker, always willing to help out, very, very positive person. And so, here's some great other comments online. Congratulations, Ms. Cohn. She is an absolute, Ms. Cohn Matthews is an absolute gem. It says, English teachers rock, somebody else says. They also said, you are fabulous, that, that their family members had you, their kids absolutely love you, that you're an inspiration. Here we go, here's, oh yeah. No one deserves this more than you, you were inspiring, even your very first year. So, it's really incredible achievement. We just want to let you know that we're so proud of you. We've got this nice proclamation, I'm going to read it off, and then we'd love to have a couple of comments if that's okay. All right. Whereas Emma Cohn Matthews, an English teacher at Wycomico High School, was named the 2025-26 Wycomico Teacher of the Year and will represent Wycomico County Schools in the Maryland Teacher of the Year recognition program. Whereas Ms. Cohn Matthews began teaching with Wycomico County Public Schools in 2018 and spent all seven years at Wycomico High School. She is a dedicated leader of her school, who is in her fifth year at the PBIS, as the PBIS chair, and a second year as English and World Language Department Chair, whereas she's attended Salisbury University, received her bachelor's degree in English Secondary Education in 2018, and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction in 2023. She is currently pursuing a doctoral degree in literary studies and working towards national board certification. Pretty amazing. She is an adjunct professor at Salisbury University and a member of the National Council of Teachers in English and National Education Association and the Maryland Literary Association. Whereas Ms. Cohn Matthews is a dedicated teacher who provides a safe public, or space, or space for the students and for her classroom. She empowers her students to see in themselves being capable, valued, and prepared for the future. She strives to provide students with the skills to become successful and critical thinkers. She is also an advisor of Y-HI's GSA and after-school tutor and mentor teacher. Pretty amazing. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council congratulates Emma Cohn Matthews for being named the 2025 and 2026 Wycomico Teacher of the Year, done this 15th day of April 2025, signed by the entire county council. Emma, say a couple words.
Thank you. Honored doesn't even begin to describe how I feel. If you've seen the video, you probably saw my jaw drop, but I am profoundly honored and humbled to receive this recognition and be able to represent a profession and county that I hold so dear to my heart. It has provided me the opportunity to pursue my biggest passion, which is student advocacy, and in the many hats, that is my number one goal and passion, and I look forward to this next chapter and opportunity to continue doing what I love so much. So, thank you very much.
And I did want to say, if there's any administration, I see, if anybody wants to come in and say anything extra, I did usually invite you all to, and then we'll get a picture together if that's okay.
Thank you, Josh. Micah Safer, Superintendent of Schools for Wycomico County, as you can see, from all of the, from the Rising Stars to the Teacher of the Year finalists, to our new Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Emma Cohn Matthews, we are extremely proud of all that they have accomplished and what they do for our students each and every day, and the way that they support them, advocate for them, and just are behind them in their achievements. So, as Mr. Bill McCain said, the teachers are the ones that make the difference in our schools. They are the ones that are working most closely with our students. We want our student achievement to continue to improve each and every day. We have to do what we can to make sure that that person in that classroom is the best that we can possibly provide for those students. We have wonderful examples of the teachers that we want all 1,400 of our teachers to be each and every day up here, so just want to thank the council for your recognition today, but most importantly, thank all of these wonderful teachers for what they do each day, day in and day out for our students. So, thank you all very much.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize Arbor Day in Wycomico County. I think Mr. Colin Harrison.
All right, our next proclamation is for Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, it was proposed by the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that the special day be set aside for the planting of trees. So, the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in planting over 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas not only can trees reduce carbon, or reduce erosion of valuable topsoil, it can lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, is also a very valuable and renewable resource, and enhance the beauty of our community. Whereas Wycomico County is proud to join our nation in recognizing Arbor Day on the first Wednesday of April each year, consistent with state and Maryland designation for Arbor Day. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council urges citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect their woodlands, increase tree cover, and for the benefit of current and future generations. Please, if you're hearing my voice, go plant a tree. Done this 15th day of April 2025, signed by the entire county council, and we have, Colin, let's see if you can for us.
Thank you, council, for recognizing an important day in our community. One of my favorite quotes, best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, the second best time is now. So, get outside, plant some trees, make a difference in the air quality. Thanks.
Final proclamation we have is a proclamation to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and presenting, the award is, presenting the proclamation is Councilman James Wynn. We have Chris Hopkins, Deputy Director of Wycomico County. We have Chris Hopkins, Deputy Director of Wycomico County Emergency Services, as well as First Sergeant Anthony Glenn with the Wycomico County Sheriff's Department.
I feel like my allergies are getting worse. Okay. So we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So we have two agencies here. I'm going to read one, and it's the same for the other, just so everyone's aware. Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week recognizes the dedicated men and women who answer calls for help at 911, 911 centers across the country. And whereas 911 specialists provide the first critical contact for those in need of emergency services, and in the midst of a crisis, obtain vital information from callers to rapidly link them to first responders and sometimes dispense vital life savings information themselves. And whereas the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services employs highly trained and dedicated 911 specialists who are on duty 24 hours every day of the year and often go unrecognized for the work they perform, which enhances the safety of the entire community. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week of April 13 through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wycomico County. And thanks to all 911 specialists for their dedicated service to the community. Done this 15th day, April 2025. Thank you, guys.
My name's Justin Byrd. I'm a shift supervisor at the 911 center. I didn't find out I was going to be here until this morning, so I hope my hair looks okay. There are 20 more people just like me, just in my department alone, that are also deserving of this. So we appreciate you guys recognizing us. We go through a lot of training after we get the job, and we have to continue our education to maintain our certifications and out countless hours of training that we pour into this stuff. And so we appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. I think she wants us up there. How do you want to do this?
Two different pictures, one for each.
Good morning, Council President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. I have one announcement to make regarding the agenda before we get started, and that is Resolutions Number 49-2025 and 50-2025 will be postponed to the first meeting in May. So the first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 44-2025, and this is to amend the 2025 operating and capital budget to increase funding for the Sharp's Point dredge spoils hauling and relocation project in the amount of $2.3 million. This is a request for funds to support the dredging at Sharp's Point. The dredging cycle has been delayed for nearly seven years, which has led to increased sediment buildup. This requires the removal of a estimated 400,000 cubic yards of material, which is significantly more than the original projected amount. The county is working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the project, and we have Adam Corey here, Executive Director of Environmental Services, if you have any questions.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 44-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Joe White, Wycomico County. It seemed, it seemed that online from last week, the numbers changed significantly. And I'm not sure if there's an explanation that you can address in the, in the public part of this work session. It seems concerning because you're talking, at the very least, $2.3 million. And, you know, we're constantly hearing through the budget process that we're scraping together the last $2 million for public education or volunteer fire departments. If the dredging hasn't been done for seven years, could any of the soil have been moved in the last seven years? Because it seems to me, and I'm not, I'm not really well-versed on that, if I'm being honest, is that we're once again in a position where you all have to make a really quick decision because we're up against someone else's deadline. I just want to remind you, you're up against someone else's deadline with our money. And just please, please look at it responsibly. Not saying don't do the work, but every time somebody comes to you with another $2 million request and a deadline that seems like it's tomorrow, it's very frustrating.
Thank you, Mr. White. You have the public comments.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Just to echo a couple of things that Mr. White just said. Number one, this is another example of a last-minute, gotta-have-the-money-today proposition. So just be cognizant of that. Not an engineer, I'm certainly not an environmental expert, but I don't quite understand everything that shows up and haven't had time to digest it since I went through the briefing book on Thursday evening, Friday morning, and came up with some questions, only to find out yesterday afternoon what was in the briefing book Thursday and Friday, wasn't what's in the briefing book yesterday. So, number one, we've got supposedly $1.25 million currently in the budget for moving this dirt. There is a bid that is going out, and they are asking for $2.3 million today. So that's $3.5 million for 100 cubic yards of soil to be moved. They could have been moved in the last three years, but hasn't, so we'll go by that. But the really concerning part is we're looking at $3.5 million to move 100 cubic yards. But in July of '27, we're looking for a bid to move 300 cubic yards, which if you're going to spend $3.5 million to move 100 cubic yards, that looks like $10.5 million if you multiply it by three, to move the 300 cubic yards in two years. So once again, the original ask was for $7.5 million. I think you're going to find out in a year or two years, they're going to be coming back and telling you that they need another $3 million because there's not enough money in there. It's a lot of conversation about the soil and what can happen to the soil. The manager engineer for this county has said that this, while bid documents were being composed, several tasks were being completed to ensure the most effective use and placement of soil was considered. While doing so, it is determined that soils can be used at a beneficial reuse for landfill daily cover. This use alone is a financial win in the long term, as we will not have to pull from or pay to haul soil from our other borrow pits. So we've got a pit in Conley Mill. We just spent $1 million about eight months ago to buy property on Route 50, Naylor Mill Road, to have more soil. And now we've got 400 cubic yards of soil that we can use according to the Engineering Department of the county. So I'm just asking that you please, will you look at this? It looks to me like, and I realize that the people who are in the Public Works Department, the director, the assistant director, and the environmental director have not been here for seven years. But if this work is supposed to be done every three to four years, it certainly seems like somebody would have known somewhere along the line in the past two or three years that we had to move this dirt and not come to you on the 15th of April, saying we need an answer immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins. Any other public comments? That concludes the public comments for Resolution Number 45-2025. entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 44-2025. Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion. Everybody here.
Good morning. Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Adam Corey, Executive Director of Environmental Services.
Staff of Public Works and Director of Public Works.
So I'm going to start off with the dollar amount and how it changed from 7.5 to 2.3. So we were, we sent out a bid to do two phases. Phase one would move 100,000 cubic yards, and phase two would move 300, additional 300,000 cubic yards out of the dredge spoil site that we have at Sharp's Point. We got one bidder. That bidder bid $2.3 million for phase one. They bid significantly higher than that, and the multiple was not a multiple of three. And so we ultimately made the decision, and that, when we had to advertise for the $7.5 million, we didn't have the bids yet in. We made an estimate. When the bid came in, we notified council administrator and requested the amount be removed down to the $2.3 million of the current bid. The contractor has agreed to accept a phase one award only. We are required by the Army Corps of Engineers to get 100,000 cubic yards out of Sharp's Point by October.
October 1st.
October 1st of 2025. If we want to stay in rotation to maintain our dredging at, on the Wycomico River, or in the Wycomico River, whichever way you say dredging, sorry, in, on, at. So if we want to maintain our place in line and keep the river open for the boat traffic that we have on the river, we need to remove 100,000 cubic yards by October 1st. This vendor has agreed to do it for $2.3 million. Yes, there is additional funds in the budget in a capital project for dredging of an additional million dollars. At this moment, we are not, we are requesting to maintain those funds so that we can continue our planning process and also do some concurrent work for the next phase, which is the 300,000 cubic yards. So that is how the numbers change from 7.5 to 2.3. Again, the 100,000 cubic yards kind of came as a surprise to us, but from the Army Corps. Actually, it became 400,000, the magnitude that they were looking for. And I'm going to turn it over to Adam for some of those details. But I did want to explain on the financial side, in your budget, we added a new spread, a new page to the very end of the budget that does an estimated reconciliation of fund balance. This is the type of thing you use fund balance on. You use fund balance on capital projects. And this is a capital project that is going to benefit Wycomico County and benefit the vendors who use Wycomico County for shipping purposes, both bringing in and taking out of our area. And if we get out of rotation with the Army Corps, that could have detrimental impacts to the navigability of our channel. And so, again, to be able to meet their deadline of October 1st, the only way to do that is for us to do it with a vendor. This vendor has agreed to do it, agreed to meet our deadlines, and we have a price. The spreadsheet in the back of the budget will reconcile how we have the affordability for this, as well as how we will have the affordability for what is in our budget. So I did want to say that based on our financial analysis, this is affordable and this is the appropriate use of our savings account because it is a one-time, or it is a capital project. It is not an operating cost. So now I will turn it over to Adam.
Good morning, council. Thank you for seeing us today, and we certainly understand and understand the public comments as well. Thank you, James. Certainly understand the public comments as well with the concern that, you know, here we are on the date that we're here with this request, but I would not be here with this team with such a significant request if it wasn't important for what we're going to do here in Wycomico County, especially as it pertains to an economic standpoint. We have some other people in the room today, including Mr. Dave Ryan, our partners with Rao Engineering, who are working with us tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure that we have a plan moving forward into the future. Because this is the only way you can manage dredge spoil placement, dredge spoil relocation, you have to have a comprehensive plan moving forward. I can tell you this morning that with the help of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we are working towards that goal. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has tasked our regional from the Baltimore District to work collaboratively with us to create a five-year management plan. That's something that's very much needed in this, in this ask. So I do want to talk a little bit about where this comes from and how it goes forward from the standpoint of why the dredging is necessary. Obviously, the Wycomico River is a federal navigable channel, and the Port of Salisbury being one of the busiest ports in the state of Maryland with companies like Purdue. Obviously, need to say no more with the impact that company has on the economy of Wycomico and our region, but also Vulcan, the fuel docks, and Chesapeake Shipbuilding, just to name a few. So the basis of the project here, folks, with this PowerPoint is the U.S. Army Corps. They're out of the Baltimore District. They are the ones that are the dredging contractor. They are the ones that hire that out, been doing it for years. It's on a specific rotation, typically of three-year period. Unfortunately, due to some concerns that occurred before, we skipped a rotation. So effectively, if you are doing a third of the river span of the upper stretch, separating into three phases, phase one, two, and three, you should be hitting it three years, three years later hit the next section, three years later hit the next section, and so on. Because of some of the constraints of the U.S. Army Corps as it pertains to their logistics and resources, including funding, we got skipped. We are in a position right now with this ask today for this 100,000 cubic yards, so we don't get skipped again. Based on some very preliminary bathometric studies, the U.S. Army Corps is still looking to do, they have to resurvey, the center portion of the upper Wycomico is at a critical stage, wherein if it is not dredged in this particular rotation, we risk the federal channel being closed. And that would mean that the ships that are trying to get into the Port of Salisbury could not make it. So with the U.S. Army Corps funds for dredge material, it's approximately $3 to $5 million for the upper, and that's the required permits and the conditions that are needed. The Sharp's Point facility, which is located in Fruitland there, it has a seven-cell structure that holds a lot of material. They need three, two primarily, but three of these cells freed up of space, if you will, so that more dredge material can be placed in them. Now dredge material comes in a slurry, so you have to fill that dredge material in in a slurry fashion, decant and de-water off of it. It takes up a lot of space, and this is the reason for the 100,000 that is needed. Here's our current conditions at Sharp's Point. Some of these photographs are a little bit older. They show one of the more recent relocation efforts. When we looked at this from a standpoint of feasibility, 400,000 cubic yards, nearly impossible for us to complete in six months' time. I mean, literally, it is impossible to complete without a true miracle. So we look at other available lands that are potential for expansion of our dredge spoils. This has been looked at before by the county when I started looking into our historic documentation. We have a 31-acre piece of land right next to it that abuts it. We are currently working with Row Engineering on our wetlands delineation and potential for deforestation, but that's not going to get us enough now because it's going to take years to get that permitting complete. But again, in the five-year plan, we're going to work on it. When you start to think about what it's going to take to do 400,000 cubic yards, it's just basic math, just based on some of our hauling that we do from like Conley Mill, for example. It's 170 trucks a day. It's insurmountable. So we looked at this for potentially bidding it out as an initial phase, phase one, phase two. And like Pam said earlier, we did that. We only got one bid back from the public after holding, holding our meetings on Open Gov. And then, so we're here today to say, we have to get that 100,000 cubic yards out. With that, the contractor was willing to accept that first phase just to get us started. And then again, we need to, we need to go back to the drawing board. We really, really do with our comprehensive planning and the bidding of the secondary phase and/or negotiation processes. All right, so the pathway forward, as we've talked about, we're working on our due diligence. As you can see in the bottom right-hand corner of that polygon is that 31-acre piece that we're talking about. So we do have some room for the future. It is going to take some time. It's going to take us significantly about a permitting because there are wetlands, including pristine wetlands there to concern about, and it is completely forested. So this is not something that's going to come very quickly. Obviously, I don't think I need to stress the urgency of this project. Again, approximately 300 barges carry and distribute petroleum, soybean oil, grain, and building aggregate. This removes around 45,000 trucks from our roadways every year. And again, risking this, you're, you're risking the, effectively the economy of Waucomiko and beyond. So as far as numbers are concerned, Vulcan Materials, yearly revenue of $1 million, Chesapeake Shipbuilding Corporation with 200 employees and 22.3. And then again, Purdue, a yearly revenue of $10 billion and 30,000 employees. And of course, you know, that might be nationwide, but we are talking about Waucomiko being their hub. So our recommendations and requests, this is stuff out, we need to get prepared for as far as where are we going to put the material? We have worked very, very, very hard with our stakeholders, partners, and survey firms to get a minimum right now of three locations identified on county-owned property to be able to stockpile this material. As far as beneficial reuse, we have performed direct push survey analysis, lab results final were received literally this morning. I've submitted them to the Maryland Department of the Environment for review so that I can utilize that material at the landfill as an alternative daily cover. So it is a beneficial reuse of dredge. We are also in talks right now with a contractor concerning the airport runway extension where some of this material could be utilized. On top of those particular processes, we are also looking into utilizing in-house resources moving forward so that we have a controlled strategy of management of dredge spoil relocation over the years to come. So we are not sitting here in front of you asking for a last-minute reprieve from the situation we find ourselves in. So that is the end of my slideshow. Thank you for bearing with me through that and certainly take any of your questions.
Josh?
Pardon my ignorance on the topic, I guess, but are we able to take, or I guess, are there any other outlets for dredge spoil? I know there's been island restorations and things like that.
Sure.
Outside of our areas, that cost prohibitive, is that costly to us or is that not really what we want?
No, certainly we, we, we're going to have a lot of material, a lot more than what we can really do. You know, we, we can never use that much material here. Maybe a long period of time, but we got to find more innovative ways to get rid of it. And I don't want to, I don't say get rid of it to trash it. I mean, we got to find ways to reuse it somewhere else. There's tons and it's in your briefing book. There's Maryland Department of the Environment's Beneficial and Innovative Reuse Guidance Documentation. It gives you a plethora of options from, you know, wetlands mitigation, you know, island, obviously popular island, if you're familiar with that, up towards Eastern Bay, that the state utilizes dredge spoil material from the, the approach to the inner harbor. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things we could do with this material and we might as well use it to our benefit. The issue is the timing here in this case. But if we start putting into our five-year plan, and frankly, five-year plan is not enough. This needs to be a 10-year plan. So we'll start with the five and go to 10. And in that period of time, especially in the first three to five, find out what other options are available for us to utilize both internally and externally. I mean, there's partners across the state that could utilize this material. It's just exactly like you said, how much is it going to cost to get it there? Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
Engineer, and I read some of this stuff where they put some on the beaches. I worry about contamination.
Yeah, certainly, so.
And talking about funding, you know, we go down the highway, I-95 or wherever, pay tolls. Do you, the people that use our river, are they responsible for giving us some money?
It's a very good question and it is certainly something that is, has been in my mind of late, believe me. You know, the U.S. Army Corps has a job to do to get that federal channel open. It's our responsibility as the county government to make sure they've got a place to put it. It is a significant benefit to many business owners in the area and some very, very large partners. I really do think it's worth having that collaborative outreach to people like that and those, and those large corporations to say, you know, let's work together on a project. So.
That's what I think, I think your five-year plan.
Yes, ma'am.
We're taxpayers is paying this.
Yes.
We agree it's a lot of money when we have things to do and our budget's coming up. I think you need to go into Purdue and Chesapeake Building and the other company you named.
Yeah, Vulcan.
They're the ones using it and, and probably dropping stuff in the river, you know.
So they, I'm sorry, Mustafa, they, they do provide for our, but they provide an economic benefit for our community. They provide jobs, which provide income tax, which provide people who live in houses, which provide sales tax for the state. So yes, there is not a direct payment for dredging, but if we don't have that channel navigable, it would have a financial impact on us because of not having potential jobs, having potential industry here. So yes, the current model, and I, I will readily admit, I'm not aware of a model across, across the country that has the, a, a fee-for-service type concept for dredging associated with the actual industries that use your, your channel. But they are providing fees to us in many different ways by us having that channel open.
Also, right now, we have to relocate about 400,000 cubic yards, but each year on top of this 400,000 cubic yards, there is an additional, there will be an additional 100,000 cubic yards that the U.S. Army Corps is dredging yearly. So for the upcoming three years, if we just beat that's the first phase one, which is about 100,000 cubic yards, next year and for the upcoming, for three years, we may need to relocate 200,000 cubic yards yearly for the upcoming, upcoming three years. There's a lot of financial burden on the county as well. And the Port of Salisbury is actually, is the main reason why this stuff Salisbury was established here and it is up and running for hundreds of years and I am sure we need to keep it open. But also regarding the financial terms, there are right now six publicly owned marine terminals, terminals that is using this port and they are handling above, over 1 million tons of material yearly. So I don't know, that's up to the public and maybe there, there may be some financial sharing options with them or maybe, I don't know, we can come up with some other ideas. But our intention here is that we need to make it as a routine task for our public works, public works division department and we'll do, do it as a, as a routine task yearly within, within our budget and within our, if, if applicable, within our staff and workforce and equipments. So that is the plan moving forward.
Yes. Thank you for the very comprehensive presentation. You managed to cross off everything on my list except for two items. If this money is allocated today, when would, when would, would we see a shovel in the ground?
Yes, sir. So good question. We would want to get our contracts assigned immediately and I could have NOI capability for ENS plans that is effectively setting up our silt fence operation at our first stockpile site in Allen with, by, by, within two weeks' time. We've already got the permit process started. The survey work's been started. So the first drop site, if you will, is, is, is pretty ready almost.
And on that is, from a financial standpoint, I would need a signed resolution to be able to enter the, the journal entry that allows us to create the PO. So if I get the, the minute I get the signed resolution, I provide it to my staff, we can set up the capital project. Once the capital project is set up, it is a matter of timing, probably a day to get the purchase order created. But until we have those monies, we can't sign the contract and we can't sign the contract without the money. So it's, it's one of those catch 22 things.
So I'm not an engineer, but I like reverse engineering. So knowing this river has to be dredged to a depth of 14 feet to allow the $2 million of commerce to navigate the waters, we know every once in a while, we got to pull dirt out of the river. It gets piled up. We know that. Is there any way that we can put this on an annual basis and not have to bid it out and handle it in-house? Or is that amount insurmountable for our resources?
Great question. So the amount currently is insurmountable for our resources. We would effectively have to double not only our working staff at either the solid waste or roads division or both, a combination thereof, a half and half. We would also have to double our fleet, our equipment, specialized equipment, dump fleet, which we have very, we have a pretty limited dump fleet when you think about it. Roads is a little bit better off than solid waste is, but no, it would be insurmountable. Now, with that being said, moving towards that five-year and 10-year comprehensive plan, the idea, and I think this is what Mustafa was trying to touch on, was if we start knocking away at this after we get phase one and phase two done, then as a county internally, resources, we manage that, we say with our resources, we're going to divert a little bit of them this particular time of the year, start to remove 25,000 to 50,000 cubic yards, which is not insurmountable, okay, over a period of time, then you get ahead of the game, right? Get ahead of the game. And I think over time, you can get to that point, but for this much material, it would be impossible.
If we get that facility next door set up, could we then be put in a position of not having to use on-highway vehicles to move it? We could use off-road?
Everything there would be off-road, yes, sir.
Okay.
So to, to haul 100,000 cubic yard per year, if it's, if we just accept it as a, as a routine task yearly to, to be done in-house, so we need to just haul per day like 500, 500 cubic yards per day. And we assume just, it depends on the distance between the storage yard and the dredging point, but if we just assume there, there might be like five to eight trips per truck, we would need about 12 to 13 pieces of equipment additional to our equipments.
Doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't and it's extremely expensive, but now you're talking about amphibious pontooned excavators, long sticks, at least two of them, several off-road trucks. Then of course, if you need to locate it off-site, now you're talking about a new dump fleet as well. You're, that's, you know, we, we could burn that real quick. You know how expensive that stuff is?
So again, the intention of this is to get over the hurdle and keep us in the queue with the Army Corps and meet their deadline of October 1st so that we can keep our channel navigable. The, the discussions with Army Corps have been fruitful and positive and they are, I believe, positive in the direction that we are planning, especially with this, with this $2.3 million.
Yeah, and of course, the U.S. Army Corps is facing some, you know, strain too with, with federal budgeting, so.
I was going to ask, are they back on schedule?
Well, they're, you know, one of the big things with them is, and I don't want to speak for the Corps because, you know, we can, and we can certainly have a representative at some point get back with us here on some of these things if we ever want to get back into future work session discussions about dredge management, which we're going to have to. I mean, you know, one of the things is equipment for them. When you think about it, is there a dedicated dredge barge that's just for our particular area? The answer is no. These things are moved all over the place. So that's why the, the rotation's so important. And when you skip a rotation, which we did and effectively haven't dredged for almost seven years, you're really behind the eight ball.
So if we had our own dredge, we could, we could contract it out to neighboring counties, right?
Oh, no, no, that's not what I was suggesting, no.
I mean, like.
Just saying in the future.
Well, no, it would, we would still have the Army Corps do it. It's, the question is, is that if we can stay, if we can keep that piece of equipment in our.
In our jurisdiction.
In our river, that every, you know, it, this year it's moving here, this year it's moving here, it's moving back and that it never leaves our river.
Yeah.
That would be a dedicated piece of equipment that the federal government is providing to keep our federal channel open. It is a federal requirement to do the digging. It is a county or local government requirement to provide the site for that digging. So we would not want to take on the, the risk, the, of, of the actual digging. We just have to be able to make sure that we have on an annual basis ability for them to place the material somewhere.
I guess it's not off the table to create an island.
We, certainly, I mean, now you're talking about a, a heavy lift from an engineering, design and permitting standpoint, but I mean, you know, there, there are islands in the bay, in our area of the bay that have disappeared since our childhood. So, you know.
There's a bunch of islands out there.
Yeah.
That, that are just disappearing.
Pam, you're recommending this come from fund balance?
Yes.
Not to put you on the spot, but how much for this year's budget is due to come out of fund balance?
So I did, this is a little preview of what's in your budget, which will be in a couple. So, so again, as I stated, it's, it's the last page in your, in the budget presentation. So you will all be able to see these numbers at, in a little bit. So we start with the audited number of $85 million that we just got for June 30th, 2025. Council has adopted four resolutions that have taken out a fund balance for fiscal '25. Those are approximately $3 million that we have taken out of there. There's one on there, there's called a recommendation for city fire department. I don't want to go into that right now, that's taking us off, but there's a million dollars on there. I just want you to be aware, we've placed a placeholder. I'd like to discuss that with council during the budget process. Then we have the 2.3. That would take us down to $79 million. Now, when we budgeted 2025, we made estimates on income tax and interest. We are beating those estimates right now, so we believe that we will actually replenish our fund balance because those, if we spend every dime in our budget, which is a rare occurrence, but if we spend every dime in our fiscal 2025 budget, I think the fund balance that we are using in '25 will be replenished by the fact that interest income came in higher than we were, is coming in higher than we expected and so is income tax. Again, we can talk about that a little bit further in the budget, but, so we were, we're back up over the $85 million. Now, we are recommending a fund balance use of $20 million, which would take us to a net fund balance at the end of 2026 at $67 million. That is still a very healthy fund balance, it still meets all GFO8 requirements and it takes care of, and I'm taking some of my thunder from a later comment, it funds 28 capital projects for Waucomiko County across multiple departments. And it funds additional operating capital needs for equipment purchases and some operating capital needs potentially for the EMS divisions.
So where I was going with this, it sounds like this is a necessity and that was a great presentation, by the way. Have we looked at where we can maybe cut somewhere else instead of just spending more and more money? Since this is a necessity, maybe something else that's been put in the budget could be cut?
So.
We'll be reviewing that later.
I, I.
I'm, I'm asking.
For fiscal '25, I do not believe there is any need to cut anything for the budget to maintain the fund balance that just got, that just got awarded or just got announced for 2024. So.
I understand that that wasn't considered, not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
But during the budget process, I, I will gladly discuss during work sessions how we came to the capital number that we did.
I think everybody understands.
Mr. Corey, this address for you. And we appreciate the work that you're doing here because I know you've just come in more recently. And this is probably something that probably raised a red flag for you. And I understand, there's no one in this room that doesn't understand the importance of getting this done immediately and how we're going to address it. I think the issue is why we are here today in this situation we're here. You know, a study was done in 2018 saying that the process needed to move forward. Nothing changed, nothing erratic. The council approved somewhere in the range of $350,000 every single year since then, since 2020, excuse me, in the CIP, which is the planned document, but we also put it in the capital budget. So, I'm not so sure, because I don't always know those processes. We approve it. I assume these monies go into some type of a.
So, those have been set aside? Yes.
Where it's set aside. So, that's about $2.1 million in the capital budget that's been approved, from my knowledge, since 2020. And so, I'm curious as to why we're all of a sudden caught off-guard because we keep having the money. Every year, you put it in the CIP, it's in the capital budget. So, why isn't somebody saying, isn't it time to dredge?
Not only time to dredge, but time to move what you've already dredged.
When I say that, yes.
Yes, sir. And properly maintain the dredge facilities.
Right.
All I can tell you, sir, is we've got to do it. And I don't mean we got to dredge Wacomiko River, that's easy. Everybody knows that's got to be done. We have to implement a comprehensive management strategy that's going to carry us into the future where we're not sitting here behind the eight ball. There's just, there's no getting around it.
May I, John, real quick? And so, $350,000, yes, has been put in since I have helped do the budget, the first budget year that I presented to council was 2022. So, I know that the $350,000 was moved. Prior to that, I will readily admit, I did not go back and look. I do know the $350,000 was moved for '22, '23, '24, and now '25. So, that gives us the $1.2 million that we have in the account right now. Again, we're not recommending that we use those funds because we're asking for those funds to be there for setting up the silt fencing, setting up, doing the, some of the other internal things that the contractor will not carry. And in this comprehensive plan, we are going to have to look at whether or not $350,000 is the appropriate number to be putting aside every year. Based on cost escalation, it is probably not any longer. But we have not had the two gentlemen sitting next to me to help make this, you know, stay on a top priority list. And so, as your finance director, I've been asked to fund $350,000. We have funded it, we have set it aside. On the dredging side of things, has it been potentially put to the side? Yes. Can we continue to do that? No, and we're not planning to.
Well, you're asking for 2.3 today, is that right?
Correct.
But from my recollection here, I mean, from what I see as what has already been approved in the capital budget over the last five or six years, you should already have 2.1.
We have 1.2 remaining in the account. And that's why I'm saying that we're recommending that that money stay there because if we reduce this 2.3 to the 1.25 plus, you know, the difference between 2.3, that leaves us nothing for in-house work.
Right. No seed to carry this further because once we get Phase One complete, we have to be able to continue forward.
Well, that's a whole nother set of dynamics. I mean, you're going to be, you're going to have to be coming in here within the next year or two asking for the rest of the $5 million.
Yes, sir.
I understand, so that's all.
It is, you will see it in the budget. It is in the budget. But I am asking that you don't reduce this 2.3 by the 1.25 so that we have available funds internally to do additional work.
If they're doing the dredging in October, will they do, is that just one or is that two phase? They're doing one phase, is that the North Prong?
Yes, in the upper, it's in the upper.
About 120,000 square yards.
Yes, well, yeah, could give or take 100,000 cubic yards of material that are going to come in.
So, my question would be, if we reduce the amount of removal that we're planning to do to account just for the one, the 120,000 cubic yards.
Right.
Would that then, I'm assuming they will not come back for another three years?
Correct.
To that section.
To that section. But there's three sections.
So, they come back the next year for Section Two?
Yes.
So, they will be back in the.
Yes, and that's why it's important. And what we did with the, when we did the RFB for the bid is that we made sure that those deadlines line up with what the Army Corps requirements would be. Like, for example, that Phase Two had to be completed by October of '27.
What about the property that's adjacent to these seven cells right now?
Yeah.
Would that give us time to?
I think so. You know, we're getting pretty close on that. The, again, the preliminary work for forestation, surveying, deforestation potential, the wetlands and the wetlands mitigation, there are things we're still working on. But two to three years to be able to get permits to start actually having that site ready, it's, that would be optimistic, to say the least.
We also have a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers stating that they were going to skip a year?
I not necessarily know that we have a formal letter. This has been a lot of, a lot of correspondence via email and, you know, pretty much monthly meetings about where we stand. I can get you, I can go back in the emails and find where they said this is the minimum we need.
I mean, you know, we represent the public as a whole. We don't try to be bad guys. We just had to know that we're responsible.
Yes, sir.
The citizens look at us and go, just as you heard in the public comments here, what are you, you know, how are you going to hold people accountable for the taxpayers' dollars?
Absolutely.
And it seems as if we're really, we've opened ourselves up to an exorbitant expense because there was, somehow the ball has been dropped over the last six years. It's a hard, it's a hard fact, but I think that's probably what we're facing. Not going to get that answer today, and I understand that. But that is a concern of mine. So, if we maybe do try to consider that section of property that we know is right next to the seven cells, I can understand that. I would have thought that when the Army Corps of Engineers sent that letter or that email and said, "We're skipping this year," that also should have sent up a red flag to someone and said, "This is really going to be a problem." So, again, how we got here, I find confounding. Joe?
Yeah, I've got something. You done?
I'll stop.
Okay. A lot of the questions have been answered that I've written down here. But you've got three sprawl sites, correct? That you're going to move, four or two?
Yeah, three, and then we could eventually do another fourth and fifth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where are you going to move sprawl to to begin with?
The first one's going to be at our Allen Convenience Center facility. There's four, about 4.75 acres of unencumbered meadow right there that we're going to do our NOI and ENS controls.
You've said that this is suitable for cover for the landfill.
So, I'm looking for permission from that from Maryland Department of Environment right now.
I thought that would already, I thought.
No, sir. I said this morning, we got our final analysis and it's been submitted to MDE for their review.
If that's approved, why don't you move it there instead of Allen? Because as the old farmer said, you're going to wear the dirt out moving it.
Yeah, understood.
So, and it's going to cost less to move it there and so move it to Allen, then load it up again and take it to the landfill. The other thing is, the landfill's an enterprise account, right? Why shouldn't the landfill be paying part of this? They should be. If you're going to use a sprawl, if you're going to use this sprawl, it's got some of that money, not all of it, some of it should come from the landfill.
Yep. So, to give you an idea on the differentiation between the landfill taking it and utilizing it directly as a daily cover material is Cell One. And I could bring the actual site back up again. It'll be a little bit harder to kind of talk about without seeing it. But there's seven cells on the property at Sharp's Point. Cell One is the highest and driest material. It's 20 feet above the berm. It's the easiest to grab. That's not what the U.S. Army Corps wants us to do because they can't put anything more into it. My goal is to get the initial, because of the urgency we're in, is to get that 100,000 cubic yards off the property. Now, I do have one location for it at the landfill that is a stockpile zone. That's already been promised to Cedar Hill dredge. That I need to work with the Department of Parks and Recreation to bring that material in.
How many truckloads do you use a day for cover?
Well, we're.
At the landfill?
Yeah, daily cover depends on where we are, but anywhere from 12 to 15 off-road truckloads. And then you might only utilize three of those, but we're moving that material up every day. When you get to exterior slope placement, where you need a more suitable material to shed water, which honestly, this dredge bowl is going to come into good use for that because it is a silt loam. It's not sand, it's, you know, it's got some body to it. So, but just let me get back to why we're putting it in Allen instead of the, instead of landfill first. I don't necessarily have the room for it right now because the only place that I stockpile daily cover material is in currently the footprint of Cell Seven. When we get to design and construction of Cell Seven, I got to have that area clear. So, five acres behind the landfill, five acres around behind roads by DGS, and five acres at Allen. The one over here at the landfill that I just talked about, I'm going to have to be putting material from Cedar Hill. We need to remove 80,000 cubic yards from that property. Not as much of a concern as this one. That one's being worked on with Park and Rec. I need to get that 100,000 cubic yards out. I don't have enough room to store it at the landfill right now. So, that's why it's going to Allen. However, once we get that 100,000 cubic yards to Allen, my goal is to utilize our in-house resources to start moving with my equipment, my dump trucks from Cell One, the high-dry cell down there at Sharp's Point, taking that straight to the landfill and loading it on to the, on the daily working face at the end of the day. So, that's something I can manage with my staff.
And that would be paid for by enterprise because it would be enterprise employees that would be doing the work.
The total cubic yard will be, how much you said?
I might be able to get 25,000 to 50,000.
So, you're talking about 170 loads a day moving?
That's if you were doing 400,000 cubic yards in six months' time.
Have you done any outreach to the neighbors? I think you're going to see some, do you know how many houses are going to have to pass, neighborhood?
So that.
Any estimate of what's going to cost to repair the roads when the roads are done? And what I, what I heard Pam said when we were talking about the money John said, mentioned, was there's other things to be done like silt fence. And so, the monies that you've asked for today isn't the total cost of this project, right?
So, the silt fencing and the setup of that site is already being paid for out of my enterprise monies? Like for silt fencing and surveying and work like that?
Yeah, I thought she said it was coming out of. Wait a minute, let me finish. I thought when John was questioning you, you said that the silt fencing and things had to come out of this $350,000 that we were given a year. Is that not right or not?
Partly. So, the silt, for example, the Allen site, the Allen stockpile site, the setup of that site, the engineering and the survey work is being paid for through the existing funding that's available right now out of that 350 that's been put away every year, that 1.25. Additional work at Sharp's Point facility for surveying, for wetlands, forestation, all that kind of stuff, that's coming out of there as well. The silt fence and setup of the ENS plan and permitting specifically for Allen, I'm utilizing enterprise fund money with the landfill for that because it's the landfill's, well, it's county's property, but it's one of our, it's one of our convenience center locations.
So, you've got a contractor that's moving the dirt. Who's taking care of the issues like spillage on the roads and things like?
Both the contractor and the county are both co-NOI participants in the permit process for sediment erosion control, for making sure material's not dragged out on the road. The contractor is responsible for making sure the roadways are kept up. Obviously, any material that spilled out on the, or draw, or drug out by tires outside of the construction entrance, you know, that's all got to be taken care of by the contractor. At the stockpile facilities, the contractor and the county both, as again, co-permittees, are both responsible for controls of silt fencing.
Who does the work? You say they're both responsible, but who's going to do the work?
The contractor is going to do the work and send the bid.
I'm talking about contractor cleaning it up. You say we're both responsible, but.
Yeah, so if the contractor's hauling his material out onto the road with his units and he is creating a nuisance with that material, that contractor's responsible for bringing in a sweep machine or whatever and getting that back up off the road. Yep.
We'll see the county street sweeper out there sweeping the roads off.
I don't think so, not unless, not unless it's my trucks that make the mess. And if it is, then we're definitely going to.
Is there a penalty on the contractor if he doesn't get the work done in time?
Lord, that is a good question.
I'll have to get back.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that, whether or not there was a penalty. I do, I know that there was a question in.
Call that a penalty clause?
Yeah, I know that was a question that was asked in Open Gov.
We don't have that off the top.
Off the top of my head, I do not have that.
I think that's something you need to look at.
Will do.
I'm done. You done, Joe? Okay.
I just want one comment. Mr. Corey, I just want to say thank you publicly while we're sitting here. This stuff is extraordinarily hard to follow, all the missing, the pieces that are going here and there and where and how long and the amount of expertise it takes to follow all of that. The situation that we're in, we would not be in had someone like you been in place or you specifically years before. So, I just want to thank you for your expertise on this. We need more people like you who understand the depth of this and who are willing to put in the time and effort to actually, to make sure it gets right. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilman Hastings. And I honestly do believe that the Department of Public Works has an extremely strong and well-rounded team, that we're not, we're not going to be finding ourselves in these kinds of situations. Yes, sir.
I would, I would second that. Very good. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 44-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
If I could get a signed copy today or tomorrow, it would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurley?
Hey, next is the public hearing on Resolution Number 45-2025. This is authorized in the county executive to accept a $123,360 grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the Community Development Block Grant Program to be utilized for homeless and food service-related projects. The Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development is requesting approval to accept a $123,360 grant amendment from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's COVID funding. These funds will support homeless and food-related services in Wacomiko County, specifically benefiting the local Christian shelter. The funds will also support staff time at the shelter. And we have Ms. Kaylee Justice, Planning Manager here, if you have any questions.
This time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 45-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns.
Joe White, Wacomiko County. Obviously, I think anytime we have a chance to have funds come into the community to fight homelessness and food scarcity for some folks, that's a, that's a good thing. My question is, do, will there be any accountability to where this money ends up back to this body here? I don't know if this money ends up in the local management board. But back in September, several of us asked questions about the sudden resignation of Tim Bosman. Those questions have not been answered. And in the intervening months, I've been at several council members where you've accepted other grants or given the executive authority to accept other grants and hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe now approaching a million. Using the open checkbook feature on the county website, it has been noted that there are several large gift card purchases through that body. It doesn't say here where this money actually heads up if you're just part of the community. And before this money could be actually allocated, I'd like to see the council update the P-card rules so that the end user is always visible to the public because right now you have several departments who are using, including the local management board, using those funds to buy gift cards. And maybe they're all legitimate, but we don't know. And I think the public deserves to know.
White? As a point of order, this funding will be going to the Christian shelter. Any other public comments? Seeing an entertaining motion from council, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 45-2025.
Don't move.
Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 45-25. We have a motion, a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Hey, next is the Wacomiko County delegation legislative recap on the 2025 General Assembly Session.
Ready? I know you all think that you've gotten away from Annapolis, but you see you come in at 10 o'clock and you're going to be sitting until 11:30. Not much changes. But we will give you more than two minutes, okay?
Hey, Barry.
But for the public, if you could, for announcing, just let everyone know who you are. We know who you are, but just those that are out there, starting from my left, just.
Delegate Tom Hutchinson.
Delegate Chris Adams.
Senator Mary Beth Carosa.
Delegate Sheree Sample Hughes.
Senator Johnny Mounts.
Delegate Barry Beecham.
Thank you all very much for being here because we know how busy you are. We know how busy your schedule's been. So, we will give you the floor. So we will give you the floor. First of all, I'd like to say that we do really appreciate the input that we've had over the year and, you know, a lot of phone calls back and forth. Doesn't always happen like that, hasn't always happened like that, but we've engaged with each and every one of you. And then we get the, the reports that you send down and this most recent report that you've given us in wrapping up the entire year, really helpful to us. So we appreciate all that you've done. I'll give whomever the floor.
Okay, you go ahead, Mary Beth.
Senator?
Okay. Good morning and thank you for giving us this opportunity. And since you have a good turnout of our Wacomico County delegation, I'm going to give a few broad highlights and then leave time for questions. My other colleagues may need to leave after they give their comments. The, the two primary priority issues that we all knew from the beginning and that did dominate the session were the budget and energy issues. You know, when it comes to the budget, a $67 billion budget with 1.8 billion in tax increases with cost shifts to the county, I think we all know that the challenges that we're facing together, we're glad to see that the disparity grant was increased to maybe cover some of those cost shifts. What I'm going to recommend for us going forward is the budget and energy will, and education will continue to be the three dominating issues that we throughout this interim worked together on Wacomico's priorities so we can be in the best situation we are, but it's a, it's a serious difficult situation that we're facing. We're well aware, you know, we took positions to protect our local authorities and flexibilities and not have those cost shifts, but we know what you're facing, we want to work with you. I did want to mention in our effort to make sure that we receive our fair share of funding, we did want to highlight that, you know, there was funding for the Fruitland Primary School construction that we've been working with Dr. Stoffler to keep that on track. We have, there's funding for Warwick Community College, Parsonsburg Fire Company, Title Health Peninsula Regional, Salisbury Regional Airport, the Mason Dixon Sports Complex in Delmar, Salisbury University. These were just to let you know that in a tough budget year, we as a Wacomico County delegation are going to fight and do everything we can to at least receive our fair share of funding, knowing that there, that there were budget cuts. What we do have to face head on are the, is the mandated spending. Until we come face to face with that and know that we have to pull back on the mandated spending, it's going to continue to have cost shifts to the counties. I do want to let you know, those of us who oppose the budget also did offer alternative proposals. Once, I wanted to give an example, I introduced an amendment to the alternative budget that we introduced on the Senate side that would actually pause the mandated blueprint spending and implementation for two years, and that would have saved $88 million. So I think it's important, if we can work with you, we're going to have to go right back to this, whatever we're facing now. So I wanted to put that on, on your radar screen. I also would like to share a little bit of good news. Sometimes a proposal comes to you and you realize it can be a win-win. And I had a bat conservation bill. I think it was, it was my fun bill the session where the forest industry came forward and said they would be, they were concerned about the, the limited production they might have in our forests because of the, there's four species of endangered bats. And we worked with the, the forest industry on a bat conservation plan that will protect these four endangered species of bats, but at the same time allow our forest industry to manage the forest. And as you all well know, I think it's sometimes overlooked, but the forest industry is a $3.3 billion industry for the state of Maryland, supporting about 13,000 jobs. I'm going to just wrap up on two pieces of legislation that I was, worked on and I think my colleagues might want to expand, but we were approached by the Wacomico Board of Education with a late request. We had already passed bill request and bill introduction deadlines when we were presented, when Dr. Stoffler approached us about presenting legislation that was required under the consent decree. And that legislation, as you well know, was to add a student member to the Wacomico Board of Education and to reorganize the Board of Election districts to mirror the county council districts. That legislation with Delegate Chris Adams, you know, taking the lead on the House side, but supported by our whole Wacomico County delegation, we were able to put that forward and it did pass before signee die. And one last piece of public safety legislation that I wanted to update everyone on, you all may be aware that Chief Minshane and Sheriff Lewis, along with the school system, have requested legislation to prohibit roadway solicitation. It's a local bill. It actually passed unanimously in the Senate and we came across some challenges on the House side regarding constitutionality. We worked with Patrick Gilbert and to address those issues, the bill was amended to address those issues and on the last day of signee die, it was held back. I have an assurance from the Chair of the House Environment and Transportation Committee, Chair Corman, that there will be a statewide bill for those counties that want to have this prohibition against roadway solicitation. And those counties who want to participate will be able to participate. So we regret the delay of one year, but we are going to go forward with it next year. So I appreciate you're giving me the update.
Good morning, everyone. Certainly good to be on this end of the state and good to see everyone's faces. And I just love that you all are having to make these tough decisions this week and in these long agendas, so enjoy. But I serve on the Judiciary Committee and we had a plethora of bills, as we always do, from felonies to geriatric, letting people out of prison if they're on their deathbed and so many other things that came before us. I wanted to just highlight just a few things. As you heard, you know, we had a tough and still is a tough budget. And at this juncture, it is estimated that the federal government is going to cut about 600 million out of our state budget. And so that alone is concerning. So we did look at the special fund that we had set up during COVID, which was like a catastrophic event, special budget. And so it's now kind of entitled federal workers if they should be losing their jobs and then needing the support. So there is support at the state level through the Department of Labor to assist persons in that fashion because as we are, we have a lot of federal employees in the state of Maryland and some right here on the eastern shore that work from home and they're deployed by the Department of Education and many other agencies as well. So I think to that end, what we are able to do is at least to get on the front end and try to help from a state perspective. Couple of other things, just wanted to highlight for your interest at this, at the county level, there was one piece of legislation that was put forth, and this is enabling legislation. I didn't like all the mandates, as you can tell, but this is enabling legislation. It deals with code enforcement, the ability to wear body worn cameras. When I first got the bill, matter of fact, it was in my committee, I was concerned about it a little bit from the standpoint that I didn't know if there would be aggression towards our code enforcement officers or those individuals going out if they had that and not have all the proper tools. The bill passed and so it is an ability of the county or the municipality to make that decision if they would like to have that. So that's something for you to think of. Also enabling legislation specifically for county-run nursing homes. There is a piece of legislation that allows the county to conduct surveys of the nursing home should the state fall behind in their survey process. The county can go in and do their own, but certainly it would be at your expense, but there's another eyes on the county nursing home and that was in the health committee that was brought up. As you were heard, that the disparity grant went from 75, 75% to 90%. That happened in the kind of the ninth hour, literally. And to that end, certainly it benefits this county, but the budget overall, I had great, great concerns about it because I saw that a lot of these mandates and a lot of the things that were in the budget was not beneficial to our way of life in the rural community. And when we're looking at program open space funds, when we're looking at the, the hit for the IT taxes that are coming on play, we're still fighting for internet. And so I don't, I, I don't, I don't see the logic in that when we're looking at increased fees when we know in our communities, we're still just trying to get the bare minimum. And that was a part of the revenue as it came to pass for the budget. One other thing that I'll just highlight, there was a study on the, or is a study, on detecting deadly weapons in public middle and high schools. So this particular study is supposed to be conducted and a report is supposed to be issued by December the 1st, 2026. So I know that our school system's always grappling with state, safety in our school systems and this is a specific effort to make sure that we have at least a study and then whatever moves forward as to how we can protect our schools a little bit safer. And then while I had the mic, I just wanted to highlight, I'll be having my district meeting, as I always do when I get out of session, the one for Wacomico County is April the 22nd, and that'll be in Hebron at St. Luke United Methodist Church. It's in the fellowship hall. In addition to hearing from me, we'll also be able to hear from the Department of Labor, not only specifically wanting to talk about the, the efforts for the federal workers, but also to talk about the apprenticeships that we now have onboard and opportunities there as it relates to what people can do. And then in my other part of the district in Dorchester, I still have Department of Labor as one of my speakers, but I also have ICE. You may ask, why do I want to hear from them? I want to hear from ICE because I want to know what, what's true and what isn't true. When we were in the Judiciary Committee, we were asked various questions of the panel. Are you able to go in, are you able to go into churches? Those are things I just didn't even know. And a lot of us didn't have a clue. So while they're not able to come to Hebron, they are able to be there at the 23rd meeting in Herlock. And that's just for education purposes, we're not talking about specific cases, but it's just for knowledge purposes for people in general. So to that end, I think that's all the highlights. And the one last one, I think Councilwoman Shields would like this one. We did get notification and you may have received as well, but the Department of Natural Resources has allocated 309,000 for renovations at Indian Village Playground for the restrooms, pavilion and fencing replacement. So it's in the process, so just keep an eye on it. Okay. Thank you.
Delegate, we would like to commend you for your much-publicized debate on the floor. Excellent job. And I'm so glad it went out everywhere so everybody could understand exactly how you are certainly an individual who has, you know, you have your principles and you have your integrity and we really appreciate the position that you took. So thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next, Delegate Chris Adams. Oh, were you getting ready to go, Johnny?
You're good, you're good.
So I'll, I'll be brief as, as I can with the delegation here today. So I'm the Chair of the Eastern Shore delegation. For four years, I was elected to do that. This year was somewhat unique in that there were certainly subjects related to budget this year that we knew were coming. I, in pre-session, told many of my citizens, this will be the first budget in 11 years I likely will not support because I knew that the way that legislature was going to move forward, it was going to require tax increases. And in fact, it became a historic tax increase. But during our delegation meetings, we did have Department of Legislative Services come in and talk about the local component and issues that each county is going to have to face moving forward. I wanted to share and make sure that the county understands that our budget situation gets worse over time, not better. Folks should already know that. I mean, we were sort of behind the eight ball this year with what's happening federally, but certainly as a state, if we continue to spend money on public education and Medicaid spending that's been expanding fairly broadly over the last couple of years, that at some point it gets reconciled. And unfortunately for the counties, the way it gets reconciled is through the form of unfunded mandates that come down. And you actually saw some of that this year that we can talk about as we wrap up our, our session. There were two issues that came up before the Eastern Shore delegation this year that are worthy of, of comment. One was energy prices. So, you know, we brought dump over power to our delegation meeting and had an overly long presentation from them to understand their position, but also they needed to understand what our citizens, your citizens, constituents were saying about, about energy. And the, the reflection that I would have on those meetings is, is basically twofold. One, you know, these are heavily regulated utilities. They have to get their rates approved by the Public Service Commission. They don't raise these independently. And that at the end of the day, these rate increases that came, came as a result of, in my opinion, and many, over the additional mandates are coming down on the utilities to force renewable energy. And then also the fact that the state of Maryland has continued to reduce the amount of generation that happens in our state. So we have to go further away from home to get energy. It doesn't surprise anyone here to know that it's more expensive than, than to get that energy. The, the other component that relates to dump over power really comes down to, as legislature, we, we were in a position where we understood the impact on citizens and that we also know that this coming summer, there's another round of rate increases. I want you to be aware of the fact that this is not the end of this conversation. You know, I think the legislature, to this point, fell flat in the response on, on the subject. We will be giving every citizen in the state of Maryland a rebate on their, on their power bill if they're dump over power or one of these regulated utilities. And this will amount to about $100 per year, maybe just for the one year. And I'm sorry, these tax or these power bills are hundreds of dollars in increases. And so the legislature could have done more and should have done more as it relates to energy. In my committee, I serve on economic matters. There were two bills that came through this year that related to the subject. One was called the Next Generation Energy Act. And this bill was supposed to advance nuclear, so Calvert cliffs, expanding Calvert cliffs. It was also meant to retrofit and expand natural gas as a form of generation. And the question is, why would the legislature bring a bill like this forward? Because we understood that we do not generate enough in-state, you know, baseload reliable, inexpensive energy and that that policy had to change. Unfortunately, what that bill became was a bill modified heavily by the environmentalists to really force their leverage on, on the subject and made it a bill that's not going to incentivize nuclear to expand in our state, nor is it going to advance interest in natural gas. We're trying to retrofit coal, retrofit other facilities to, to give our state the ability to decide its own destiny as it relates to generation. The other bill that we had that related to energy is the other big subject that happened in the Eastern Shore delegation, which had to do with solar. So solar siting frankly was one of the top issues that members of our delegation from Cecil County down to Somerset County have. And the legislature knows that they need somewhere around 20, 22,000 acres to meet the current RPS goals. What they got, what the solar industry got at the end was the likelihood of getting 6,000 to 7,000 acres per county in our state of Maryland under this new piece of legislation. And to top it off, they have shortcut and expedited what is called the CPCN process. That's the Certificate for Public Need and Necessity. That is meant to be the public component that matches up the need for additional generation with concern citizens about where these are cited. The, the point of the exercise, if we're expediting these processes, are we going to have the right kind of public input? And will the counties be able to say and citizens be able to say no to these additional solar projects? And the answer is no. We have removed and eliminated your planning and zoning, your comprehensive plan, your discretion as it relates to when citizens come to you and say, we need the county council to do their job. And your answer is going to be, I'm sorry, Annapolis and their infinite wisdom has come back and said, no, we're going to decide for the counties. These percentages were like 5%. So they, they were literally billing this, it's just 5%. We're only going to ask for 5% of your prime agricultural land to be sited for solar, but take that 5% based on the amount of acreage you have in your, your agricultural soils that are part of this preservation, right? It's 6, 7,000 acres of land.
Dorchester had a good place in plan, didn't they? Didn't they have a good?
Every county has had very, yeah, I mean, some of these have come down to pilot programs to bring tax revenue to these projects. In other words, make it more difficult. But also if you're going to take away land use, if you're going to take away the county's ability to use land for development, at least make it such that the tax revenue follows. Dorchester County is so much preserved through state and federal parks that, you know, this, this sort of mandate is just a terrible policy moving forward. So those were the two primary issues that came forward in the Eastern Shore delegation. I mean, I could go on. I serve on the Economic Matters Committee and, but these were the top issues that I can bring as a member of the delegation. So off we go.
We appreciate your 30 bullet points on increased fees and taxes.
Yes. You like that, do you?
Yes. Johnny?
Yeah, I'll be just pretty quick in the follow-up, you know, with a testimony you're going to receive, but clearly the budget is bad. It's going to make us less competitive. It's a big impact for Wacomico County. Energy is very simple. You've heard a lot about it. You don't have enough supply, the cost goes up. And, you know, there are all kinds of factors, but to me, the supply issue is number one driving cost, but more importantly, the discussion about solar that you're hearing about, the reality is there is a, we are, there is a target on the eastern shore for solar. There's a plan that's been put in place and, and it's a real issue and it needs to, needs a lot of attention. I don't have any recommendations on how to deal with it, but we need to pay very close attention to how this is working and what kind of leverage, if anything, that the county has to, to control what's going on. There was an important bill passed this year that Delegate Hutchinson is going to explain to everybody. It deals with well and septic inspectors. And it's amazing that this got through because if you recall, Wacomico County did everything besides drag the governor, Governor Hogan by his ears, you know, down here to explain to him the problems. We couldn't get anything done, but magically. We couldn't get anything done, but magically, this year, Delegate Hutchinson, you know, has come up with a pilot program. It doesn't help Wacomico right now, but it's in Dorchester County. It goes well in Dorchester County. It's something I could see doing very well for Wacomico County. I don't think you're going to hear about this. It's something the county needs to take a look at. There's a bill passed. It doesn't take effect this year, it takes effect next year, and it's a big deal. Mako is involved in it, and it deals with the collection of the accommodations tax. That's being transferred to the Comptroller's Office. And that bill was put off for a year with the understanding that there were issues, there were problems, but the end goal was to make this move in law. Mako, even though they supported the change, they didn't really support it, and that's how it got pushed off for another year. So you're probably going to hear about that from Mako. I wouldn't wait to hear from them. I talked to your finance folks, get a look at that legislation. I don't have the bill number and get an understanding of what's being proposed, because you might have some, there might be some legitimate concerns about that. And then, just, and the last thing I'd bring to your attention is, no, I'm on Senate Finance. We talk about alcohol. The county executive came up, did a great job. We passed a couple alcohol bills out of the Senate. There was one we didn't pass that deals with the sale of seltzers, and that's a complicated issue. We're going to work over that over the summer and get a good plan for how to try to move that forward next year. But just breaking the ice with that would just, it would be just as controversial as that grocery store bill that everybody was talking about before session that just fizzled into thin air. And then lastly, you know, we did this bill again this year about the cutoff on deer hunting, and it fails every year, and it's got to be very frustrating, because I know how frustrating it is for us that put the bill forward. And my recommendation to the county is bring that bill back every single year until it passes, because there's no legitimate reason for that time cutoff, and we're not crazy for doing it. The bill, the original agreement that was made, that law was, that's the crazy thing, you know? So don't feel that that's an effort in waste. It's an effort we have to make every single year. But it's a great honor. It was a rough year in Annapolis, probably one of the most challenging that I can, definitely the most challenging that I can remember. So thank you very much.
Yes, delegates, I want to hear what.
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to elaborate on that a little bit. But first of all, my honor to be here, it's actually the first time I've been able to come, because I usually went on a cruise after I got out of session, and so this year, I'm not on a cruise ship.
Sorry.
But I am very proud to, I'm the only delegate that represents the eastern shore on the Health and Government Operations Committee. So my focus, and when I'm in Annapolis, is what can I do to help improve the quality of healthcare here on the eastern shore? And so I kind of keep that focus on improving access, quality, workforce shortage, ED wait times, and obviously getting the funding that we need. And I was successful in passing two bills to address the healthcare workforce shortage and co-sponsored a bill that allowed the continuation of telehealth and to be reimbursed for telehealth services, which I think is pretty critical for us on the eastern shore. You know, when we finished the session, and a group of us were sitting around and saying, what are we going to write in our end-of-session newsletters that's positive? And it was really hard for us to find something to do. So let me share some positives, and that's where those bad bills that didn't go through that you probably heard about when we went into session. And this is my third year there, and I think what they do is they bring these, hey, look at this shiny ball over here, these bad bills, and then over here, they sneak in some other bad bills that eventually make it through. So the estate tax going from $5 million to $2 million did not go through. They did not eliminate the inheritance tax. We did not tax sugary drinks. We're not taxing mattresses. But we are taxing tires. So there's a $5 fee on every new tire that's bought, in addition to the recycle fees, in addition to the state sales tax that's there. There seems to be an all-out assault on any of us who drive motor vehicles, which is all of us over here on the eastern shore, raising, you know, emissions testing fees, raising the sales tax on vehicles to 6.5%, up from 6%. So that's very unfortunate, because that is our only mode of transportation that we have over here. So in terms of the bills, so the bill in terms of the septic permitting, that was House Bill 1124, Senator Mouts co-sponsored it on the Senate side, both passed. And this came about through Dorchester County and working with MDE. We only have one health environment specialist in Dorchester County, big county, and there were, number one complaint we got in our office was the delay in getting approvals for permits, which slowed down development, which, so I reached out to MDE about a year ago, and working with, actually, Jeanie Haddaway Riccio, we were somewhat mimicking what Delaware is doing. And so MDE allowed us to do a three-year pilot only in Dorchester County. And what that will allow is a homeowner to hire a licensed septic contractor to come out and do the site planning work that needs to be done, to do all the permitting work that needs to be done. That then needs to be submitted back to the health environment specialists for final approval, but we're looking at this as a way to expedite this. Now, the way the bill was drafted, it just gives MDE the guidelines to be able to create this, but in theory, we see that it would be able to hire a private contractor to do that work, submit it within 30 days, there need to either be, you know, approval or rejection of the application, or additional information needs to be done. And then, when it comes time to do the work, the concept is that that contractor would not be permitted to actually then do the work. It would have to be another approved contractor that needs to be done. I did hear that Wacomico was interested in getting on the bill, as many other counties came up to me to try to get on it. So let's see how the first year goes with it and see how it works out. In terms of the accommodations tax, it's only for what they call accommodation intermediaries, and that would be technically Airbnb and VRBO. You'll still, so the concept is that for Airbnb and VRBO, the county won't be collecting the tax, the Comptroller's Office will be collecting the tax, and then charging you a 1.5% administration fee on that. That was Senate Bill 979, and you will still be responsible for collecting the hotel tax, and you would still be responsible for collecting intermediary, accommodations intermediary taxes that fall under a smaller threshold. I found that there were a lot of unknowns about it, so they did, I talked to the comptroller. For a county such as Talbot County, who has a great process in place, they see it as a negative for them, because they're using that data for tourism and other reasons. For perhaps Wacomico or Dorchester or Caroline, who don't have a process in place, this might be a very good thing to make sure you are getting that revenue from the short-term rentals through Airbnb and VRBO.
I know you have a bill ready to partner with Delegate Hutchinson next year.
Yes, sir. That might be in my wheelhouse, but they didn't even let me hear that bill. It's right over here.
I know, Senator.
First thing that I'd like to share with you guys, since, you know, a lot of this is bad news, I had a grandson born yesterday morning.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. His name is Barry Stephen Evans. Not that, you know, it'd be my namesake, but that's pretty good stuff.
I'm sure he's been taxed.
Yeah. Now, the real deal, you know? I never had the pleasure of having an orientation going up there, because, you know, I rolled in at mid-session, so, you know, it was all like deer in the headlights for me. But I was put on appropriations. Now, you have to know, a year like this budget year, that probably wasn't the nicest place to be. What we have is, we had seven Republicans and 18 Democrats on it, and basically, we couldn't win, we couldn't win a vote. It's the same way, you know, in the House. I mean, you know, basically, we have 39, you know, against 102. So it's not that our ideas were good or bad, it was that it didn't matter. They, you know, we just couldn't, we just couldn't pass, you know, certain things. But just like Delegate Hutchinson said, you know, we certainly do amend bills, and, you know, we have the opportunity to break up, you know, some bad bills by that, you know? $67.3 billion budget, largest, you know, in history. You know, that's something that, when you look at that, and, you know, we're at a place where, you know, I was told it was a $3 billion deficit. It was really a $3.5 billion deficit when we started. And $1.6 billion in new taxes and fee increases. Now, you know, you can call it, you know, tag fees, you can call, you name it anything you want, but, you know, bottom line is, if you're working for a living and you're having to pay more money, I call it a tax. $1.9 billion in cuts. You know, being on approaches, I basically voted against anything that was going to increase or send money anywhere else. Basically, I was trying to look at cutting. No one wants to hear that their program is cut. And there were a lot of people that came into my office and said, hey, we've got this or we've got that. My proposal would have been to basically cut 5% across the board with every department. If you cut 5%, no one could argue, no one could complain, and we could have balanced the budget. They don't want to hear that, you know? So that was, that was it. You know, as far as the salaries, if you make over $500,000, then it's 6.25%. If you make over $1 million, 6.5%. New IT tax, cannabis tax went from 9 to 12%. Snack tax, 6%. I kind of laughed at that, because, you know, they raised the cannabis tax, so, you know, but if you smoke the cannabis and you need the snacks, you know, it didn't make any sense. It didn't make any sense to me. I mean, yeah. The auto tax, it actually, it got cut back from 6.8% to 6.35, which was a little better. The $5 per tire tax. Title tax doubled, so whatever the title fee for your car was, they doubled that. The tag fee, they actually had set the tag fee up so that the increases were going to be over a four-year period. Well, they cut that, and they just raised them all, you know, this year. So that was, that was speeded up, and 2% capital gains. So, you know, those things, you know, I would say would be the highlight of appropriations. It was House Bill 350, and it's the first time in history that it was not a bipartisan. All of us stuck together, and that costs our county a couple hundred thousand dollars, because they came to me and basically said, look, you know, we've got, you know, money set aside for you, you know? And I basically was like, I can't vote against a budget that is the largest tax increases ever in history, you know? And me being the new guy, you know, I said, you know, I can't do it. I said, I'm not doing it, you know? So that's basically, you know, I stood my ground. I could have been a little more popular, brought a little bit more money back, but just like Senator Croze, you know, was naming, you know, the certain, you know, we only got cut on, or I only got cut with my ass on two things, and it was, it was the Mason-Dixon Sports Complex went from $500,000 to 100, and Humane Society, I had $250,000 for LBI, and they basically cut all of that, so.
We ended up with $200,000 for Mason-Dixon.
Okay, so, but yours and mine, okay. So we ended up with 200 out of 500, so. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
On that, just one other thing that I had mentioned about that accommodations tax is Talbot County had asked us to change the collection of, it was only Talbot County and Wacomico that had the ability for the collections to go out 120 days before they could be fined. All the other jurisdictions, it's 30 days. So they incorporated that in that Airbnb bill. So today, Wacomico County is the only jurisdiction in the state that has 120-day collection period for it, so it may be something you want to look at and consider or keep it. It's just to point that out that you're there. And the only other good news is the Orange Crush is now the official state cocktail, so that did make it through.
Something to be prouder of.
So President, just, because I know you have other agenda items, but just in closing, you know, we, as an Eastern Shore delegation, really are proud of the work we did together. We really tried to leverage our positions on different committees, different relationships, House, Senate, and also, we are proud of our partnership with you. If any, if there's any takeaway from this meeting, it's that we have a lot of work to do during the interim to prepare for next session.
We appreciate everything that you have done, and reading all your materials, it's very phenomenal as far as the pushback you made and the attempts that you did make to try to bring some type of common sense to Annapolis. We understand what you're up against. Jeff?
Thank you all for advocating for our eastern shore way of life and doing what you can. I know it's like pushing a boulder up a hill. I was up there a few times testifying on business bills that made me shake my head. I have two questions. A year ago, we were all here talking about FY '26, and we were being warned about what's coming down the pipeline. What does FY '27 look like?
That's what I talked about earlier. I mean, we get advised by Department of Legislative Services. It's nonpartisan, which means it's fact-based. It's based on some degree of the border revenue estimates. It throws out the future potential revenue coming from the state, and so in the next couple, three years, our state's going to be reaching nearly a $5 billion deficit. So my original comment, it was a serious one for the county council, is our budget situation gets worse before it gets better, and my recommendation, to the extent that I'm willing to make one, is to pay caution to what's happening on the state level as you're depending on the state for certain revenue items. I would say that to any nonprofit, any business that's doing in the state of Maryland that's counting on state funding. I'm very worried about our budget situation. We could have solved the problem this year by being serious about the blueprint funding. That was a pre-COVID world that we lived in. When we passed it, when COVID came through, it changed everything. And as we sit here today, that bill and those mandates coming from the Kerwin Commission are unsustainable. We can't do what they want to do from a state level. The only option is to pass that unfunded mandate down to the counties, which, guess what, is exactly what they're aiming to do.
And I'll just add to that, because we have focused on the blueprint. It's simply unaffordable. It's not paid for. But there is a little silver lining. In the debate, when I offered the amendment about putting the pause on the blueprint for two years, I was in a back-and-forth with the Chair of the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee, Senator Ghazani, and he acknowledged on the floor that there will be changes and revisions to the blueprint in the future. That, to me, was significant, that he wasn't willing to take the amendment then and thought it was too much, too fast then, but an acknowledgement that the only way that we can address these long-term budget deficits in the future is that you're going to have to pull back on the mandated blueprint education plan.
May I say one more thing? We offered 16 different amendments for the budget, and they rejected every single one of those. And those would have softened some of the blow to the local counties, you know, but they just, they would have none of it.
And you're right next to us.
I'm going to just add one last thing. So the reality is, is that the statement that the Senator just made, revisions may happen, they're not going to happen until after the election. So that's the reality of it. And the other thing I would suggest is that you look at the Department of Legislative Services reports, because they had suggested that the counties take on even more and more burdens.
That's right.
And that was publicly stated on the floor, it's publicly written. So that might be your compass, to say, hey, this is potentially what's going to happen. And that's why it just, it really concerns me, because being a former councilperson is just like, oh, gosh, I feel like I'm getting hit. But that was the reality of the conversation, is like, no, we should put more down on the counties. So it's something to be mindful of.
Thank you for what you all do up there. I know it's tough. Been in your situation, is the odd vote out a lot of times over the years. And Cherie, you did good on TV there, girl. My wife was saying, watch Cherie, watch Cherie, see what she's saying. I look at all these increased fees and taxes, and I'm not going to ask if anybody on this panel supported them. I hope you didn't, and there may have been some that you thought were good. But you sit, Barry, I got to address this with you, I'm sorry. You sit here today and bragged about everything you voted against up there, and I appreciate that. But you come to our CIP meeting and basically endorse getting rid of the revenue. But you come to our CIP meeting and basically endorse getting rid of the revenue cap for Wacomico County. So you're trying to save the citizens of the Maryland taxes, but you don't care about the, I shouldn't say you don't care, but you're talking about raising taxes in Wacomico County. I didn't appreciate that.
Well, let me address that. I did, I turned around and said that.
I know what you said, I watched it.
Okay, well, but, but, but put it in context. I said, the elephant in the room is.
I just watched it again yesterday.
The revenue cap. And the truth of the matter is, that's the only thing that can be, can be, the revenue cap can be burst over. Is that, is that correct? Education? Because it's education is what I was referring to.
It can be education, yeah.
Right.
But, you know, the citizens voted for the revenue cap, they didn't vote for a revenue cap to be bust over by education.
Well, the, the truth of the matter is that 2% I think is, was bad legislation from the start because if you look at inflation and you look at the 2%, you're, 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 I don't think you can hold ground. So, I, I mean, you know, the, the truth is, you guys have a very tough job to do, but the truth is, if you don't have enough money coming in, then what do you do?
That's what the state said also, right?
Well.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know who can answer this. There's a lot of chatter about the proposed new state park out at Tipton. We really don't know a whole lot about it.
I mean, I'll be glad to, so that is a project that was approved by the Board of Public Works. I, as well as my colleagues that represent that district in the state, are aware and have received emails from concerned citizens over the, you know, the state park. I've talked to DNR about this. It's premature to really have a conversation because the transaction has not occurred yet. So while they got approval from the Board of Public Works, they've not completed the sale. So what is your question? Because at the moment, as a state delegate, there's no, there's no project yet. It's still in the process of being closed.
I think it's mostly, we've heard that there's a state park coming, but that's all we've heard and.
It's all I heard as of about 60 days ago.
We're getting the same questions and concerns as well and we don't have answers.
My first concern and question is whether or not we're talking about like a Shad Landing State Park with campgrounds and, you know, or is this going to be a very limited state park that really speaks to the heritage of the area, which I believe is more in tune with what the state's ambitions are. But let me, let me just say this. I wanted to be engaged on the subject and even I, with it being in my backyard, have concluded that now's not the right time for that. I believe that DNR will be constructive and work with the citizens in the area there. What I don't think's going to happen is I don't think the project's going to be killed. It's not going to be, this transaction will proceed and then we have to work together to figure out what the, the end result of that is. And, you know, this is a quote from DNR, whether folks agree or disagree, but there's worse neighbors than the Maryland Park Service. And I hope that our partnership with DNR will be fruitful because at the end of the day, if it's a quiet park that has some heritage like the Pemberton Park, I mean, that's sort of the example, free of like the ceremonies and the festivals and all, I think they really just want it to be a preservation of the, the asset there, the building, which I think's important.
You might be right, but I mean, when, when the elected body does not know anything about it, when individuals such as yourselves don't know anything about it, how can the state make that decision? How can the unilaterally make that decision?
That was my first question and.
Most of, a lot of us grew up here. We didn't, we don't even, I had to look it up to find out where it was.
I found out about it basically 60 days ago. And this was after the Board of Public Works had made their decision to close the transaction.
At place President Merritt, I talked to DNR and they said it was way premature, the transaction had not gone through, but they did assure me that they would have public hearings before they went forward with anything, so.
That'd be nice to know.
Thank you.
You know, we've done a lot of work with a lot of parks here. Pemberton Park is an absolutely fantastic park. And I think that would be much more beneficial to the citizens of, of the Lower Eastern Shore entirely as a state park. I just do.
Thanks.
Have a chance to advocate.
Um, you know, you turn on the news and it makes you cry. And I represent the minority district, most of it's low-income people. And I know people are concerned about the Medicare, Medicaid, and I know next year you'll have to do these things. And one of the concerns I have, how is Maryland going to help people who may have disabled children that get Medicaid? You have people in the nursing homes that get Medicaid, Medicare. Those are real concerns that we should have because I'm a senior citizen, I have one up in a nurse home one day. But we need to find a way, the state needs to find a way to help these people. And we got to make sure that when you hear a 13-year-old boy is declared dead and he probably has a disability and his Medicare is cut off, you know, so his mother can help get his medication. That's one concern I have. Because it's a trickle-down effect from DC to the local government, it's just a trickle-down effect. I know you can't solve the problem now, but that's one of the concerns, I know I will be getting calls about it. Because sometimes I say, it's Congressman, you have to call your Congressman or your legislator. But you don't want to pass on, I would like to have an answer, what Maryland would do next year. Also, one of the concerns I also have is the cost of living. The cost of living for people on the Eastern Shore. We don't live in Baltimore. We live on the Eastern Shore, Maryland. And how are we promoting better-paying jobs so people can pay the rent or people can become a homeowner? We want to promote home ownership, but how can people even do that if they can't afford the closing costs or the 10% they request for a down payment for a home? So that seems to be out of reach, especially here. And my daughter, my granddaughter lives in Randalls Town and she pays the same rent people pay here, but she can afford it because the salaries are different. She's a federal employee. So that's one, another concern because the questions, people ask that question. I do want to thank the state, Cherie, about Indian Village. I'm happy because I called the Ghost Playground and make it more family-oriented. I'm pleased with that. And since I have all you here, next year I plan, I called Laura to come to Annapolis so you can hear my big mouth. The alcohol, the alcohol bill. I am against putting alcohol in convenience stores in neighborhoods, especially my neighborhood, on every corner. I do not want to see that, I do not agree with it. I believe in the, the Wacomico Board, Liquor Board, because you had to have some control of alcohol. Our young people are becoming, having more cancer, more liver diseases, colon cancer. And we're promoting our children to drink. And how are we can, we can, I know some of them are, they're going to get it, but don't promote it as a local government or state government where liquor can go in all these corner stores. That's my main concern. I do not want to see liquor on any corner in my neighborhood or anybody's neighborhood because kids, you got Salisbury University, you got Warwick down there and the kids will go in there and get it and then they have these beer parties and everything. Now, I didn't drink until I was about 18. You have to be 21 now, but 18-year-olds are getting it, 17-year-olds are getting it. And when I was on the city council, I talked about cities provide transportation for the kids to go to Brew River. That's promoting alcoholism to me. So I'm totally against, totally against liquor in these convenience stores. Alcohol, I'm not talking about the beer, that total alcohol, hard liquor, I might as well say. So I just want you to know that because you didn't hear from me during your legislation session.
I could take the first part of your question about the Medicaid and the developmental disabilities funding. So initially, the governor came out and cut developmental disabilities by $200 million. And that created an incredible uproar in terms of the advocates for developmental disabilities. And they came out and forced to Annapolis. And that should just be a lesson to anybody that when you come and, and speak and protest in Annapolis, it does get an ear. Nearly all of that funding was returned back into the development disabilities funding. Working on the Government Health, the Government, Health and Government Operations Committee, the Medicaid funding and the Medicaid programs, we did not see any cuts coming that way. However, Medicaid is typically a shared with the federal government, usually a 50-50 split, sometimes a little bit different. So the real question will be what does end up happening from the federal level? And if there is significant change, as Medicaid is probably the second-largest expenditure in the state next to education, we'll probably have to go back to Annapolis for a special session to address that if and when that does occur.
I want to thank also Title Health because Church Street is in my district also. And also, I see a clearing on Marsh Street. I think that's going to be, I haven't found it officially, but I've been nose there, said, why are they cutting all these woods down? I think Title Health is going to put a clinic there on Marsh Street, I believe. And also, we have a doctor's office. So now people can walk to these facilities to get better healthcare. And so I think some people will say that minorities don't get the proper healthcare. It's no, it won't be an excuse that they can't walk to a facility in their neighborhood.
I was going to address your, the second part of your question. I know the third part they're going to respond to. But you brought up, you know, quality of life, cost of living, really what we're doing with workforce. And I actually think that we're doing very well in our partnerships here. You know, Delegate Cherie Sample Hughes mentioned the apprenticeships that we are growing. And we have partners right now through the Tri-County Workforce Alliance with the employers and the school systems where we are really focused on keeping our, our youth, our talent here on the shore for the good-paying jobs that we will have that we're developing so we don't lose them across the bridge into other areas. So I think there is, there has been a focus on that and that's been a partnership with the county, you know, as well as with the employers and the school system. So did want to, you know, give a little bit of a positive update on that.
We have one final comment from Councilman Baker and then we'll wrap. Thank you.
I want to, I want to thank each and every one of you for everything you've done, but I especially want to thank Delegate Adams. Last year, you came before this council and I'll never forget it. You said, you guys better watch this coming year's budget and your spending. This is what's on the, on the horizon. And I've not forgot it. Sometimes I get a little, I catch a lot of slack for questioning how much spending we're doing. And I don't understand why many of us have gotten into a position of, well, let's, we want more, so let's tax more or let's, you know, sometimes you got to tighten your belt. And we see the federal government doing it. We've heard what you've said about the state. And I just want to say again to this council, going through this next budget, you know, we talk about the tax cap, everybody's got their differences of opinion. Well, the tax cap is there and the voters wanted it there. We shouldn't break the tax cap because we can by ways of education. We should tighten our belt. We're going to have good years, you're going to have bad years. We got to quit this, spend more money, spend more money. How can we spend more money? How can we find more money? We have money in the fund balance, let's spend it. I just, once again, I guess I'm just making a statement. We need to be careful what we're spending.
Thank you again. And I don't want, I'd be remiss if I did not thank you, Delegate Adams, for the excellent job you've done as Chair.
Yeah, really well.
Done a very good job. Really appreciate it. It's important to us.
Keep it up.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Let's word it, talk to you soon.
Wow.
It's the beach.
I didn't forgive.